People were killing each other particularly.
Yeah. All right, well, should we get started? Welcome to the Kaysville Sitting Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, July 11th. Did I start too early?
Right on cue.
Okay, good. First, we will introduce two new commissioners. Do you want to start and maybe just say your name and give us a little bio?
Sure.
Inspirational quotes? Do some math for us, whatever.
I'm Steve Lyle, I'm a Kaysville resident. I am new on the commission starting July of this year. I currently work for Davis County. I manage the Community Development Law Grant Program for the county. I have a background in economic development, planning, and government. I've been, prior to that, I worked for Morgan County for two years and then was with the Governor's Office of Economic Development for three years and then worked for Mountland Association of Government for five years before that. So I have a pretty good background in government operations and in planning and economic development as well as general government. So, and I've lived here in Kaysville now for almost 10 years.
Great, sounds like you have a lot of experience. And then, would you reject?
I'm Toby Veras. I've been a Kaysville resident for about 10 years now. My wife and I, we have six kids and I work for Science Inc. I'm a data scientist, so work with, one of those smart people who work with the numbers and stuff, so anyway, that's my background.
Good. Thank you, welcome. And the next item of business, which maybe is a little bit unfair, if not awkward, is to have an election of a chairperson and a vice chair. I'm just going to not say the word "person," I'm just going to say a chair and a vice chair. It's easier that way and I think it covers it. In years past, we've had kind of a tradition, or at least a discussion today, this time around, for whatever reason, we haven't had much discussion about it. So, I think it's kind of wide open. Do you have any thoughts?
If you would like, Mr. Chair, current Chair, just as a reminder, based on the bylaws of the Planning Commission, so both the Chair and Vice Chair positions serve for one year. I don't believe there's limitations on how many consecutive terms you have, or how many terms you have in those positions, but just to give you an idea of what you are volunteering someone for, or signing up for, I guess, I don't know.
That might limit our participation, but I think that's a fair thing to do, yes. Any thoughts? Do you want to have some discussion?
Or nominations?
If we're ready for nominations, sure.
I'd like to nominate Will Summercornfield for Chair.
Okay.
It's payback.
I'll second that nomination.
Okay, so we have a second and a second second.
Do we just vote, or are we getting Will's thoughts on it?
We have to, I guess you have to accept, or...
Okay.
And then, we can take other nominations, or we can just vote, if that's it, if there's...
Yeah, I believe if you would like to make a vote on that, and then, again, you guys can do the discussion as you would like on this, but then we'll do a separate one also for the Vice Chair.
Do we have a motion?
We have a motion, a second. I'm just wondering if we have another nomination that we want to just, or just go with the one, I'm great, but whatever.
Me too.
Josh is outside of, well, you may even be more senior because you started a long time ago and then stopped.
That doesn't count.
So Josh would be the natural choice, I think he would be good, and he's smart and knows what he's doing, but he's also not particularly excited about it. So, and your acceptance was not particularly grandiose, either, but if there's someone that's even more excited about it, otherwise, we can just do this and be done with it.
I'm confident in Will's abilities.
Okay.
As long as you're okay with it.
I'm fine.
Okay.
All right, so then, let's have a vote?
Aye.
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 Aye, okay, great.
I'd like to nominate Josh for Vice Chair.
Second.
Do you accept?
I mean, I was going to nominate Tammy, but...
Well, we can do two and have votes, but if you're...
That's fine, sure.
Then we can take it. Okay, are there any alternative nominations? All right, make a vote, see if we get a majority.
Do I vote? Aye.
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 Well, there it is, done. Okay, is that effective now? Do I get up and leave?
Do we want to play musical chairs? Yes, I think if Mr. Summercornfield is prepared to do it, that would be appropriate, but if you're ready to go, I think that can be okay for this particular meeting.
I think we'll let Matt finish it out.
Have my swan song?
Uh huh.
Okay. I'm so honored, thank you. Okay. Next, training on roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission.
That'll be me, Mr. Chairperson, Mr. Chair, I should say. My name's Nick Mills, I'm the Kaysville City Attorney, and I don't want to take too much time. Being a Planning Commissioner is a phenomenal experience to be engaged in your community. Listening to lawyers is not the most enjoyable thing. I know we have a couple lawyers on the Planning Commission, and I am one, so, I think we have to admit that, though. I wanted to talk, take just a couple of minutes to talk about some of the kinds of decisions that you guys will see as Planning, as the Planning Commission, and draw a big distinction between administrative decisions and legislative decisions. So, an administrative decision basically just says, does the code allow what the applicant's asking us to do? And if the code allows it, there's very little discretion for what the Planning Commission can do in that situation. Some examples might be preliminary plat on a subdivision, final plat certainly on a subdivision, home occupation, some home occupation approvals. Things that the code clearly outlines what they need to do in order to get approval are generally very administrative decisions, things that, things that you shouldn't weigh in on, on what do you think the city's policy should be. The policy's already been made, it's been made when the code was passed. That's contrasted with legislative decisions. Legislative decisions, the question is really, is this something that you want in your community? And in these kind of decisions, you have broad discretion. Whenever you're creating a land use ordinance itself, how, what's going to be allowed in the community, you have broad discretion to decide how long you want cul-de-sacs to be, you have broad discretion to decide the width of streets, and all kinds of decisions once it's at, as long as it's at an ordinance passing position. Some examples would be the general plan that's going to be starting soon. You'll have broad discretion to decide the kind of density that you want, and these are all prospective questions that you'll answer. And this is really, in my opinion, where you should spend the broad majority of your time, is in legislative decisions. You're not the subdivision approval committee, you're the Planning Commission, and you should spend your time planning the city and looking at, working through the code to make sure that when subdivisions do come in, that it's exactly what the city wants. It's real easy to look in the future, well, it's not easy to do, but it's much easier to say, this is what we want subdivisions to look like, and have those subdivisions be approved than to have a subdivision you don't like come in that meets the code. At that point, your hands are pretty much bound. There is, I noticed on your agenda, and there's a couple of unique middle positions between administrative decisions and legislative decisions, and I noticed on your agenda that you have a number of conditional use permits that you're going to approve tonight, so I wanted to take a minute to talk about those. Conditional use permits are mostly administrative decisions, but they have some small aspect of legislation. And a conditional use, the law says that a conditional use should be approved, must be approved, if you can put reasonable conditions on it that will mitigate the potential negative implications. A classic example is if you wanted to put, you know, a pet store or a dog pound next to a residential subdivision. If your code allowed that as a conditional use, we can all think that there are probably some negative implications on having that kind of use next to a residence, noise, smell, and you could set reasonable conditions on that. Conditional uses are kind of falling out of favor legally, and I think that they are, there's a use for them, but I think that in the past, they've been overused to some extent. Really, you should spend your time deciding what you want and what it should look like as a Planning Commission, and then turn those conditional uses you have into administrative decisions to the extent that you can. I wanted to take a couple of minutes and talk about a couple other items that we got a question, one that we got a question on, and one that we thought was useful, as Lyle and I talked about this. The first is what we'll call ex parte communication, and that's when one party decides they want to talk to you. So, one of the, one of the reasons that you're chosen, and one of the requirements, is that you live in the community here in Kaysville, and that's a wonderful thing because you represent the community on the legislative decisions that you make. For you, sometimes that's a downside because you're going to make decisions that impact your neighbors, and your friends, and people that you know, and those people will want to come talk to you, and to the extent that you can, avoid talking to one side without the other there. I think it's always nice to just remember that if this was your project, if you were the developer, or if you had an interest in having chickens in the neighborhood, or whatever the issue might be, you'd want that to have the opportunity to be vetted on both sides and have everybody say the arguments for and against that. So, that's difficult when your neighbors come by and you meet them at church, or community events, or a stroll Kaysville, and they hit you up and want to talk to you, but to the extent that you can, you shouldn't encourage that. The other thing that we got a question on was, what, now that you're a Planning Commission member, or if you've been one for a while, what can you speak about? Can you speak about issues in the city? And that's perfectly allowed, as long as it's not a land use issue. So, if you have an opinion on how the Fourth of July, or on fiber issues, or any of the pressing issues in the city, road fees, et cetera, you can certainly have an opinion on those. If it's a land use issue, should not express an opinion. If it falls within your job as a Planning Commission, then other people should try, for lack of a better way to say this, other people should try to sway your vote, you don't need to steer the opinion. And the real reason that you shouldn't do that is because if you speak about those issues, sometimes you'll develop your own conflict of interest in those. I was at a Planning Commission meeting once in another jurisdiction, and a member of the Planning Commission expressed that they'd be interested in purchasing the property if they didn't approve this rezone, and that person had to obviously be conflicted out of it, they had a financial interest in how that turned out, which was really unfortunate because, I mean, maybe it's the right thing to do, but that person eliminated themselves in a position where they had the most power to do what they thought was best. So, if it's, like I said, if it's an issue that you decide, let other people sway your opinion, you don't need to sway theirs. And if it's not an issue that's a land use decision, then you have all the freedom in the world to speak and have an opinion, just like any other citizen. You shouldn't also speak after you've made a decision, maybe you're a dissenting vote, maybe you're in the majority, even if it's a land use decision that you've already decided on, it's best to not discuss those issues as well. Just let those work their way through the city council, and, you know, part of being in democracy is sometimes you win and sometimes you lose, and that's unfortunate, but that's how it is. If you ever have any questions, Lyle's a great resource and very knowledgeable, but I'm also happy to, happy to answer any questions, so feel free to reach out if you have anything.
Well, pretty much wrap it up with that unless you have questions. We just figured, we only have two of the three here this evening who are new on the Planning Commission, but with so many fresh faces, that'd be a good introduction, and if, as a commission, you have other items of interest that you'd like additional information on, whether it be outside of these meetings or at meetings as a training opportunity, please let us know. If you're interested, happy to offer those and provide you with what you need to operate and succeed, so. Any questions perhaps on the topics this evening?
I have a question, Lyle. So, one thing that I didn't understand before becoming a Planning Commissioner is that before an agenda item is put on the agenda, it's already been vetted, right, and reviewed for safety issues and things like that, right?
Yeah, so in part of our preparation of staff, once we receive applications, we, within our office, but also working with other departments within the city, will vet through multiple issues on the applications as is applicable. Subdivision would be one, for example, that sees many different departments, public safety, public works, even external agencies that will look at it, different utility districts and such to vet through. So, there, of course, can be more vetting that takes place in the public forum, but from a typically a technical standpoint and other motives, we've, we have been quite a bit before we ever put together the staff report.
Okay, thanks.
Question I had, when we get, so sometimes we'll get emails from community members, sometimes we get them through Lyle, which is actually better, I think, but it's hard to tell sometimes if we get them individually, if we're all getting them. And then, what we've been told is to try to circulate them to the entire commission. If I get an email and I think it's just to me, we send it out to the whole group. But the thing I wasn't aware of is whether those emails also get sent to, for example, the applicant or the other side, because I don't know if they get that.
Well, generally, when they're sent to me, I simply forward them along to the commission, and have them part of correspondence within the record. Maybe look to my right to our attorneys, whether they should be forwarded in part of the applicant's information.
Well, you made a good point about, you know, if somebody comes up to talk to me, we should try to kind of push it back into the venue of the commission, and it occurs to me, we get a lot of emails, and I, I think it's worthwhile talking about whether we should try to change that a little bit, but we get a lot of emails, sometimes with a lot of facts and a lot of pictures, and those people, some of them don't show up and don't present, they say, instead of, I can't go, or I'm not going to go, and so here's this. So it might be helpful to at least have an understanding of what, what's the best way to approach that, so I'd like you to respond to that. And then, my follow-up question would be, I wonder, I've, in my job, I've had occasion to contact other planning commissions, and I've noticed in some places, they don't have emails, they don't have, contact your commissioner through this contact, and I wonder if we want to do that, or at least encourage the comments to go into Lyle, so that we can process them the right way, instead of kind of hit and miss, or not knowing. You know, some people send out emails and they'll copy everybody, and you can see who's copied, sometimes they don't copy everybody, they blind copy everybody, and you don't know who's getting it, and I know I've been circulated some emails that I've already seen and vice versa, so if you could respond to that, that'd be great.
Yeah, I don't think there's any requirement that your email address be made public, if that's something the commission wants to change, I don't think there's any problem with that. As far as sharing the emails with the other side, I think you typically get an email from neighbor or somebody, and it's easy to share that with the applicant, typically a developer. If you get an email from the developer, that might be more difficult, but as long as they're part of the record and people can review them, I think you're, you're A-OK. If you get an email, you probably do this from what it, it sounds like you've explained, but Lyle should be certainly on who you circulate that to, and then Lyle can keep it as, or Planning Staff can keep that as part of the record.
The practice in places where, you know, that I've been involved with is, when we kind of ask the planning commissioners to do this, is if they get an email, and it's a situation like you've described, Matt, is to send it to the staff, and the staff will, you know, they'll know whether there've been others that have been sent, or if not, they'll see that and they'll circulate it to everyone, and make it part of the public record. So, they'll, they'll send it to the other commissioners, they'll send it to the applicant, and then make it part of the public record. So, if you get something, you're not sure everybody's copied, they send it to Lyle, and then Lyle can vet that, circulate it.
So, I have a, I guess, a question or a conundrum that might arise with that. Sometimes we get emails from neighbors who want to make their point, but they don't want to do it publicly.
Or they want to make it anonymously.
Right, that's what I mean, yes. So, you know, I don't know how, how we want to treat that.
Well, Lyle's pretty good about keeping secrets, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good question.
I mean, I guess we could redact aims, because I agree it needs to be made public, and I think part of the background policy idea here is, there shouldn't be deliberation and discussion and debate behind the scenes, right? So if, to the extent any of that occurs without us prompting it, I think we have to bring it out into the light of day.
Well, we've done that in the past, and we've circulated amongst the commission, but we haven't, as far as I know, we haven't ever given it to the applicant, to the other side, so they don't see what's happening.
And I think what we, to Will's point, I think maybe we craft a way of operating by saying, yeah, by saying, look, every time we get a chain of emails, we can notify the people who come to that particular, or are interested in that particular agenda item, and say, we received a bunch of emails, and if they're anonymous, we can say, some of them asked to be anonymous, so we redacted their names, but you can see the content of them by talking to Lyle, or something like that.
Well, and I have a follow-up question to that, because sometimes people will say, let me know you received this, in reply, and so at first, I didn't ever reply, just because I didn't think we were supposed to have those individual discussions, and then I was getting emails that said, and you guys were too, you know, please at least tell me you got this, and so I'd say, received, or something. What is, what are we supposed to do in that situation?
I think, I think a response of received is perfectly fine, you're not deliberating on it, you're just acknowledging that you've received it. I think there is, I, you know, this is spur of the moment, so Lyle and I haven't discussed this, but I think there is some value in directing everybody to submit their comments to Lyle or to staff, and not to individual Planning Commissioners. It's a difficult situation when somebody contacts you and says, I want to remain anonymous. If they're contacting you as a Planning Commissioner, I don't know that grandma allows them to stay anonymous. Government Records Access Management Act allows them to stay anonymous merely, merely because they request to. So I think that, as I think through it, and I, again, I'm not trying to put, not trying to make policy on the fly here, but I think certainly one email that could be sent to, that would be distributed to everybody would, might be the preferred way.
I have a question then, Lyle. Would it be permissible then, just to create a public comment, email them to the entire commission?
Yeah, what I, what I'm wondering is, we could look at, as you've probably all have seen on our website, you've got all your contact information, and that, we could modify that so that if you're interested in commenting or contacting the Planning Commission, here's how you do it, and whether that feeds through me, or just as you said, a separate inbox, yeah, I think we could do something like that, that sounds like a great idea.
In my function, I have to utilize public comments for everything I do for CDBG, and we have just a public comment email, it comes in, it doesn't come directly, I vet it, but it comes in the same way, I think that would make sense for, and then it just goes there, and then you vet it coming in, because everything, everything we do has to be, is subject to FOIA.
And I've seen that on some city websites, a lot of city websites is where they say, if you want to make a comment, do it here, and it goes to the city, to the central staff, and then they distribute it out.
Are you finding that phone calls are a similar issue? Would we need to do something similar with that?
I don't really get any phone calls.
Very rarely. I don't, I don't know that's something we need to worry about as much, but I don't know if we want to, if there's any reason to have our phone number on the website, I don't know, but that doesn't seem to be the biggest issue.
Unless it's someone who you know.
Who would know the number?
That calls you.
And they think, I've got an inside track, and then you have that conversation, and that's where, that's maybe where the rubber really meets the road.
Right, but that's not a, that's not an issue of having it on the website, because they already...
But I think it goes back to original comment, and then we need to bring them out and say, then you need to come provide public comment in a space where we can then have that dialogue.
And the advice that we've given to Planning Commissioners is if they do get a personal contact like that, they ought to, at the meeting, share it. If it was contacted by someone, such and such, and this was the basis, this was the gist of the conversation.
And ideally, you tell that person that that's what you're going to do.
Yeah, hopefully you would.
Well, but we do have scenarios where people who are complaining about a resident, they're, they're, they remain anonymous, right, they're, they can be anonymous.
So, I believe it depends on how the complaint comes in, so there are different ways that the city receives complaints, if somebody comes in in person and mentions something versus an email that has all kinds of contact information related to it. I would think if there's correspondence with their contact information on it, it may just be part of that record.
Grandma allows you to protect, the government to protect the record if they've reporting something that's going to be investigated, or violation of code.
Right, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yes, absolutely.
So when you're, someone calls Lyle and says, hey, there's someone sleeping in the backyard here every night.
Yeah, those remain, those we can protect. It's just a public comment.
Comment on whether this should go or not, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to, should we, do, do you want a motion about that, or do you want to just consider it and talk about it later? Because, you know, with Commissioner Bullock, long departed, he, he got a couple of emails that were pretty personal, I mean, they were kind of personal attacks against him, and I wonder if some of those things will get avoided if it goes into a group email.
Yeah, I think it's, I think this is great direction, and I don't know that a motion is necessary, I think we've got the direction of consensus.
It also prevents us from replying, because sometimes we have commissioners that go, you know, two or three pages worth, that reply and respond and address things, and that's great, but it also sounds like it's the commission talking rather than a commissioner, so.
This is a great discussion, thank you guys. Yeah, I'd be happy to just move on the direction that I perceive is pretty much across the board, so we'll look into it.
Great. One other question, and if, Nick, if you want to just say, let's defer that to some other time, that's fine, but I don't think you mentioned, and I'd like you to clarify what our role is, our quasi-judicial role, to the extent we have it, maybe explain quickly what it is and what times we are acting in that role.
So, as, when you act in a quasi-judicial manner, this is generally when staff's made a decision, and it's been appealed, and in that case, you're, you're bound by the code, but you get an opportunity to review the staff's decision. I think that's the least frequently utilized aspect of being a Planning Commissioner, but it does arise occasionally. Yeah, variance.
Does the Planning Commission make decisions on variances?
Yes, you are the, you are the land use authority for variance.
I think that's probably the, it might even be the only time that, that I can recall we've had variances, which we always wrangle over.
Yeah.
Yeah, the code is very difficult when it comes to variances.
Yeah.
And is that, is that about it, Lyle? Is that the only thing that, in the code, that sends things to the Planning Commission that's kind of on an appeal basis? I mean, normally, it would go to the appeals process, right?
So, the way our ordinances are set up on a land use decision, at least as far as appeals go, if it's an administrative decision dealt with by staff, an appeal first goes to the Planning Commission.
Oh, okay.
And then, if that decision is a pill that would go to, we have a land use hearing officer, an appeal authority is set up that would then consider it after that point. So, you may have the opportunity to see those more frequently, and what we've done traditionally here with our staff is when we see decisions arise where there's conflict or debate between developer, for example, and our staff as to how to interpret something and how to deal with it, we've often brought it to the commission for an interpretation prior to a formal decision by staff, kind of to head it off, so that's, that's more frequent what we've seen, and there's, I can see at least a few paces, we've probably done three or four with this commission, kind of under that nature, but it could be that, yeah, I make a call and someone second guesses that and comes to you to, to appeal that.
Then, do we treat it as an appeal, or do we treat it de novo?
I believe you're an appeal based on the facts that were given to staff, and kind of on the record basis, appeal versus a de novo review.
Do we, do we list, do I, do we identify it that way in the ordinance?
That's a good question.
I mean, yeah, I would be happy to look it up, but the wifi doesn't work in here.
I think we're going to hear that more often now that he's Chair. Not just every other commission meeting, but maybe every commission. Okay, are we done? Okay. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the June 27 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of June 27, 2019.
I'll second that.
Aye.
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 I'll just note, I think I've asked this before, and I can't remember what the question is, but when we weren't here, is it appropriate to approve minutes when, you know, it wasn't completely?
You weren't in the meeting?
Yeah, I mean, three of us here are kind of like, sure, sounds like a meeting, so. I mean, I don't, it's not a big deal.
I think so, because we can review them, right?
Yeah. But, but normally the approval is, this is what happened, these are the minutes, it worked, it jibes, we're good, but, so, anyway, I just. Okay. Next is conditional use permit for tennis lessons at 102 South Shadow Way for Michael Scott Jones.
Okay, again, just by way of introduction to the item, and to remind some of our new planning commission members to catch up to speed. Within our residential districts and agricultural districts where we find most residences throughout town, we allow for home businesses. We have several hundred within Caseville of all types and varieties. Some of those are classified as a minor home occupation that we distill with internally as staff. They would be a type where you wouldn't even know they're there necessarily, no customers, no equipment, someone doing taxes or accounting or something perhaps at a computer, where, versus, we have major home occupation categories. The planning commission reviews two of those, major home occupation A, which we see extremely rarely. There are just very few categories for that, and the most common you'll see are these major home occupation B considerations. We just recently made changes within our ordinance to allow a third category, major home occupation C, to be dealt with by staff of just a few select businesses. So this B-type application primarily deals with businesses that are having customers come to their home, often in groups, and you'll see with the second application, certain types of businesses that may have more equipment under the consideration. So in this particular case, Mr. Jones, you can see here on the map, has a home with a tennis court that has been built on site, and is hoping to use that to offer during good weather months some lessons. And they would be private lessons, probably small group, one-on-one, maybe up to four students at a time. Based on our review of this, his staff, he's got a lot of parking along the side of his house, along the north side there, where, you know, customers or clients could come and wouldn't be in the way of any of the neighbors. Currently, he's got the facilities for it, good fencing in place. I believe there's no lighting currently on the site, so he would just do it during daytime hours. With that, staff is recommending approval, but because it is a group scenario, our ordinance requires that, as a condition, there be a limit placed on the number of students allowed. And with that, it was our recommendation as staff that we limit that to no more than eight students at any one time. Given as a conditional use, we talked about that a little bit. We're looking to see if there are impacts, if there's any other unique conditions that you can find an access to, that you feel is appropriate to put a condition to, you're welcome to consider that. I believe the applicants here this evening, if you have any questions of them or of myself, I'd be happy to take those at this time, and I'll turn the floor back to you, Mr. Chair, for.
Thank you. Are there any discussions? Do we want to have the applicant come up and answer? Questions or concerns? Okay. Would you come forward, please?
I'm Scott.
You don't look like Scott.
I'm his wife, Barbara Jones, and I have to leave.
Approach the mic for us, man, so.
Just state your name in the microphone so they can get it on the record.
Okay, Barbara Thompson Jones.
Thank you.
I, I have a question. How old will your students be? Just ages, I'm just curious.
They're usually anywhere from about eight to 18. Sometimes adults, too.
That's what I wondered, do you do adult lessons?
Sometimes a little bit younger, but not much younger.
So a question for you, and maybe for Lyle as well. The limit you've got recommended here is eight. What was the basis for the number of eight?
It's probably the two people who aren't here to discuss it, where they came up with that more directly, but Dan from our office primarily was working with Michael, I think, on consideration with this. And I believe that they felt that that wouldn't limit them to what they intended to do, but that just ensured us that it wouldn't get larger than there was anticipated. I don't know if there's a specific type of amount of frontage or parking areas, but probably would typically handle, anyway, the needs of the applicant.
Does that sound right? Like eight, is that a burden?
Yeah, I don't think we'll ever do eight.
Okay.
It's usually just one or two, it's private.
Okay, so that's not a problem if we limit it?
No, I, I don't think I would even put that many people on a court at the same time.
How many sessions do you anticipate having between nine and one?
Um, they usually, they go about an hour, so, yeah, and so about, you know, four, maybe.
Four sessions?
Yeah.
Okay.
On your north side, there's, is there fencing, or is your all-access to the front of the house?
Um, there's fencing around the court, but then there's a little path on the, near the court, from the north side. They can just walk to the court door.
So that north side, you can get access, parking there without any, okay. So no disruption there on the, blocking up the neighbors, okay.
And I don't think I've ever, we, I don't think we'd have more than probably two cars or, yeah, there's never a lot.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to approve conditional use permit for a major home occupation B for group tennis instruction at 102 South Shadow Way for Michael Scott Jones, as per the recommendations made by the staff, staff report.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye. Great, thank you, good luck. Next, a conditional use permit for major home occupation B handyman and fence repair for Eric Larmour at 595 East 100 South.
Good, and again, by way of introduction, we have the same type of application as another major home occupation B. This property just down the street to the east of us on the corner, Mr. Larmour, Larmour, I'm probably saying that incorrectly, but essentially has a truck and trailer, does most of his work, and most of his materials are on site, where he does fence repair and other handyman services. No signage, and he's got a fence around him, so when he's parking his trailer home in the evening, my understanding is it'll typically be behind the fence screened, where you wouldn't know it's there. Based on our staff's conversation with him and review of the request, we're recommending approval of the major home occupation B for the handyman and fence repair without the need for additional conditions. And again, I believe he's here this evening to get into more specifics if needed, and I'm happy to answer questions as well.
Thank you. Any discussion? Would you like to have the applicant come forward? Okay. Do you want to come forward? We, we're not sure.
I don't have any questions.
You can, you came here, you might as well, right?
I don't answer questions.
Okay. Just state your name, please.
Eric Larmour.
So the question I guess I have is just, I mean, what we're really basically talking about is a, is a pickup truck and a trailer, and that's about it. That's the only impact, so to speak, that there will be.
No, there's not going to be any deliveries, there's nobody coming, it's basically all labor, I go out. I can't do your fence from my house, though.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
And the trailer's not going to be parked on the streets, is that right?
Nope, I back it into the driveway.
Doesn't sound a whole lot different than a lot of other people that have trailers.
Yeah.
I guess I have one question. So will you use your home or your location to store leftover wood or supplies or materials, or?
Rarely, it would, and if it, if I do, it would be on the trailer.
Okay.
Ready to.
Move somewhere, okay.
Take to a house or drop back off at the shop where we pick up our materials.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Any other questions? All right, we'll take a motion, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we grant a conditional use permit for a major home occupation B handyman and fence repair to Eric Larmour at 595 East 100 South with no additional conditions.
Second.
Wilf? Aye.
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 Aye. Did that, okay. Good luck. Next is tele, conditional use permit for telecommunication, telecommunications tower for T-Mobile slash Rock Schutzer at Barnes Park, approximately 950 West Sportsplex Drive.
You'll remember this from our last meeting, we discussed this for a while regarding the proposal for removing a light standard on one of the baseball fields in Barnes Park, replacing it with a tower that would also have a light on it, considered a stealth tower, based on our ordinances. Just as a quick refresher, since we do have a couple of new bodies here on the commission this evening, I'm going to go through the imagery here. So T-Mobile, and again, they're representatives who this evening to speak to this, is looking to improve services and offload some of the signal from the purple area here in the middle of the map off of I-15. So there are some other towers in the area, but they've informed the commission at the last meeting and staff that locating on those existing monopoles is outside of the range where their services and equipment need to be located to provide the function that they're looking for. With that, they provided us with some, I'm going to call them the wrong thing, but heat maps of sorts, and I'll let Mr. Schutzer speak to that more specifically, showing why and where they're trying to put that service. So with that, there, the applicant approached Caseville City with interest in having a tower located within this area. We worked with them as staff, going over several different options, different locations within the park, considering what would or wouldn't work for the city, and in particular, the Parks and Rec Department, and the functions of the park and the aesthetic, to keep it as they desired. And based on that, it was determined to look at a pole, and it's a little hard to see on this map, but if you can see my cursor on the screen, located on the northeast ball field, it's about two lights in, that would be removed and replaced. With that, they would put a compound in place where the supporting equipment for the tower would be located. There'd be space enough for equipment for two users, it would be screened by a masonry wall of sorts that, for the Parks Department's request, would match some of the materials of buildings and other structures within the park. It's that red color of sorts is what would be anticipated to be used. And then the tower itself is requested at 90 feet, which is the cap that would be allowed under the telecommunications tower ordinance, is a stealth tower, where T-Mobile is looking to take the top location on that tower. There would be space for a future user, not currently in consideration, but you can see the second set of equipment above the light standard. So the poles are approximately 70 feet in height now. You can see where the light is, would be put back at about that same height to match the other lighting within the area, is the proposal. Since the last meeting, we've looked at it again from a staff perspective, met again with the Parks Department, and some of the utility, in particular, power utility within the city, to determine if there were other locations. We had talked about different parts within the park for a number of reasons that we've essentially come back to that original location, which is kind of what we vetted through the first time, to some of the questions that the planning commission raised the last time, looking into our ordinances, in particular with the south side of the park. The ordinance does not allow the towers to be located within 300 feet of a residential zoning district, and that comes out here, it's a little tough to see, but this manicured lawn in the bottom left is actually a residential property that goes all the way out to Angel Street, so that, that distance requirement alone eliminates a lot of options, but based on access to utilities, maintenance access, function of the park programs and the like, it's been pushed back there and what, anyway, from the parks' perspective, it's also one of the more screened areas from the trees. So we heard some public comment last time as well, obviously with regard to some of the concerns on the impact with that. In my discussion with Mr. Mills here and other staff, I think with the consideration of the planning commission, we're looking pretty specifically at this location, based on the details of the report, based on the way that the ordinance is set up. Some of the discretion that the commission may have is, of course, still there, but probably rather limited in how far location or considerations could be made when we're looking at a specific spot in part of the application. So that for the consideration. The applicant may have additional information for, as was requested, as far as the RF engineer and some of their work that they've looked to, and can update you on that since the last meeting. Probably, it might do sense for now, but again, be happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. For those of us who weren't here, the main concerns were, was, I saw some discussion about trees, and was it just kind of the aesthetics of the location, or what was the?
I mean, the, the biggest concern was from an adjacent property owner to the, to the north pointer. The office building due north of. Ooh, green.
Which one do you want?
This building owner right here, I believe it was this building owner, was concerned about just the aesthetic of it. I mean, that largely was, if you boiled down, we, probably 45 minutes, maybe an hour, if you boil it down, that was the concern.
But I will add that one thing that I, I took some time to educate myself a little bit more about our ordinances, and it really wasn't our decision to look at aesthetics, it was just to look at the ordinance and see if it meets it. And that's a decision that we had, and, and, and so that's what, that's why it's back, because based upon that decision, it's just up to us to decide if it fits, and it, we had some great discussion last time, and, and it does.
But we have some latitude to discuss whether that creates problems that can't be mitigated.
That, I mean, yeah, so, right, I mean, we talked about, I think it was paragraph seven, there's three, three portions of paragraph seven, and we were saying, okay, what is the reasonably anticipated detrimental impact? And sort of ostensibly, it was the visual impact, and then one thing that, that stuck in my mind was, oh, to the, to that adjacent property owner, okay, how does that impact your business? How does that impact your use of that property? And in my opinion, the answer that I, the conclusion I drew, drew from the answer was, it doesn't really. It, it might, maybe, but we just don't want it there because we think it might. And I thought, well, a tenant looking at that space is probably not going to not come in there simply by virtue of that out-there window. That was my own opinion, so.
In the minutes, it did say that, he said that the tenants wouldn't like it as much.
Yeah.
But he didn't have like a hard example, at least from what I heard. That was just like a speculation.
Well, and I would say generally, the reason why people wouldn't like telecommunications towers is because of the way they look, right?
Yeah.
And, and that's something that, it doesn't look like it's specifically provided for in here, but to me, that's, that's the question of whether it's, fits in the.
And, yeah, and, and so here's, here's the rub there. They, they're going to go somewhere in the city. I think we could unanimously say, we're not going to put them in the middle of, of an R-120, right smack in the middle. So where else would they go? Near the business park, in a park, near businesses? Businesses don't like it, but we're, but that's not as bad as in the middle of an R-120, right? So they have to go somewhere, the visual aspect's going to be bad wherever they are.
So, and, and from, from a perspective of zoning, I think you're touching on the very point. You're putting in an industrial and/or zoned area that has that aesthetic, and I think that meets the definition of where it needs to go, and I think, you know, it does have, there is, within 300 feet of that residential, we're trying to predict that buffer zone of residential, but I think also you are putting it towards your business area. So it meets that need, it meets that strength. The other thing is, I do think it strengthens the business area over there, because you are providing a service to the businesses that do have that high qual, or that have a higher density during the day, and have that higher need of cellphone service during the day. So I think it would, in the end, benefit the businesses in the long run versus the aesthetic.
Yeah, I, I think those are all good points. I would just say, and I'm not saying I'm against it, but I would just say. Yeah, I, I think those are all good points. I would just say, and I'm not saying I'm against it, but I would just say, you know, if you'd say, where's the obvious place to put a big hunk of machine equipment, it wouldn't be in the middle of a beautiful park. And it wouldn't be to take down mature trees to do it, and
We talked about the trees, I agree with that.
Yeah, I know you're kind of a tree guy, so that's why I went to you when I said that. But, and so this brings me to what I've talked about, you know, over the years, is how good is the disguise? And I saw those renderings that weren't very, they weren't very illustrative, but I could see at night that the lights are gonna be below it and it won't be a big problem, but in the days, it can look just like a bald tower.
Well, I mean, I get your point about the park on one hand, but on the other hand, this is sort of a, it's an active park, and so with active parks, you have light poles, this is, this will be on an existing light pole. It'll, it'll replace the light pole, but it's, a light pole was already there.
No, that, and that's what, that's my question, is how different is it gonna look from a light pole that we already tolerate, right? And if it's gonna look, just looks like a little bit more, then it's not a big deal.
And I, so after this, we had this, I tried to make a conscious effort of seeing the things that you don't see, like power lines, I mean, that's the thing. In Caseville, unlike many, many cities, we have power lines everywhere.
Yeah.
You don't see them or notice them really, until someone runs into one on I-15, but that's the same thing with this, in my opinion, you, we wouldn't even notice it until we notice it, and then we might not forget it, but if you're not thinking about it, you don't even see it. That's at least how I view it.
And my perspective on this was kind of like, and I, I get your point, and others have made the point that, you know, why do we want to put these in parks? And yet, when you look around, you know, the Wasatch Front in general, a lot of these are in parks.
Yeah.
It's really kind of surprising how many of them are in parks, and I bet you're saying that, or others are saying that, because they don't even notice them. They don't even know they're there. And so from that standpoint, I say, well, okay, that's not that unusual, and if the applicant has a location here, and if the city, who is the owner of the park, is willing to let them come in, from my standpoint, I'm like, I'm fine to grant them approval to locate anywhere in the park that works for both parties. And let them work out the specific location.
Well, and I disagreed with you the last time, just because I thought the same thing, I was thinking, oh, why in a park? But now I understand that, after learning a little bit more, if it meets, if it meets the ordinance and it's allowed, it's, it's our job to recommend or approve it based upon our ordinance. Not necessarily whether or not we want it there or we like it necessarily, and, and really a city council decision as to how, you know, what they're gonna actually do, so.
I disagree, I think we can, I think we have a right and an obligation as a planning commission to look at this and say, hey, this is ugly, this doesn't work here, and if they're not gonna be able to disguise it well enough or make it fit within the circumstances, we shouldn't allow it. And that's what I think, I think that's our prerogative. Now, that being said, I'm not saying it is and we shouldn't. I'm just saying, I, I think we have that obligation, and I think one of the problems with Caseville and other cities like ours is that throughout time, we've kind of allowed mechanical-looking things and junky-looking things to kind of populate our neighborhoods, and now we drive by and they're there, and we see them, we try to ignore them, but but it's, you know, places could look better.
That was kind of the whole purpose in putting together, I guess is what you're saying, for the stealth
Right.
Tower requirements or the ordinance to
Yeah, and I've, in my professional life, I've had occasions to negotiate with cell tower companies, and sometimes they come up with really good ideas, and sometimes they're not so good, the stealth disguises. And I, and I'm not saying, again, I'm not making a judgment on this particular situation, but I think that's what you ought to be careful of, because you know, parks are pleasant places to be, and we don't want to encumber them with too much.
I mean, so with the stealth, the way I look at it with, I, I might have used the phrase lipstick on a pig last time, and in some respects, this is quote-unquote a pig. And so we're not gonna change a pig, although there are options to make it look like a, I don't know, what's a pretty animal? Because we, we saw when we were looking at this, pictures of like palm tree, we're not gonna put that in Caseville, but you, you can make a, a cell tower look like a palm tree, or there's one in Sandy Cemetery I know right now, that is a, that looks like a, supposed to look like a spruce tree or something, it's not a very good one, but
Yeah.
And so that's like almost the opposite, you're like trying to hide it and you bring attention to it, so I don't know that we can, we don't want to do, at least in my opinion, we don't want to do that here, so what do you do? You say, how do we hide it? You hide it in, in infrastructure that's already there, that's one way you hide it, and that's, this is doing that, so that's, it's trying to mitigate it in some respects.
And we can have, we can have them replace trees that they remove, right, and we can ask for that, to kind of minimize
Yeah, certainly you could ask for that. One caveat or something to that, I suppose, or at least request of the property owner, I believe our Parks Department more than happy to replace and put in new trees, obviously, they're probably not gonna be the same scale and maturity.
Yeah.
Although I do know one of the reasons this site was something of interest is the trees that would go were not their favorite trees on the property.
The Parks Department's non-favorite trees?
Those specific trees, so.
They don't, they're not liked by the Parks Department?
Correct.
Just curious, I didn't know they ranked them like that.
And so what they
Oh, there's bad trees and good trees.
Yeah, there are, yeah, and what they've requested is, should the commission think additional trees are necessary, to leave that up to our arborist to decide where and how they go in, he's very particular and I know there's some expertise up there, but if that seems like something you'd like to go with, at least that's the request, is I think there's a willingness and happiness to put them back in, but maybe general this, the language of planting something that would assist in screening, you could put in a number of trees probably, and then he would locate them accordingly.
Okay, this isn't a public hearing, but if you, I've seen you raise your hand like four times, so why don't you come on up and state your name and give us a brief comment if you have it?
Sure. My name's Elizabeth Nielsen, and I am the property owner. And I just wanted, I thought you were maybe missing a piece of information that might be useful to you, and that is that after the meeting two weeks ago, we did talk with T-Mobile, Rock Schuter, and he did come down, we offered to explore the possibility of actually putting the tower on our back, our northwest corner of our parking, parking lot. So essentially putting it within the buildings instead of in the park. And we, he went down with my brother, who was also here last time, and they looked at it, looked like it might be feasible, but we never heard anything back from T-Mobile, so I just wanted you to know that we did offer that, and, and we're still offering that, if, if that is something that works. So, just thought you might want that piece of information.
Great, thank you.
I mean, that, that was gonna be my question, because I knew that there was, that's where our meeting ended, was they were gonna talk, so I was curious what came of it.
And is there, do you want to address that, or Lyle, go ahead?
Yes, Rock Schuter. Let me very quickly go back to the beginning, and that is by, by commenting in response to her, we did have a conversation, we looked at that location, we took the time to have our RF engineer look at it, and we backed up and came right back to the position that we, we have an application for in the park. We spent a lot of time, certain amount of money, coordinating with the city and the Parks Department to get something that they like. It works best for T-Mobile right there. It's a quarter mile north to go to the back lot of the property in question. So that, that's a big difference in RF standards. I, I just wanted to say that our application does meet the standard of the ordinance, and, and the beautiful thing is, there are twelve seventy-foot lights there. We're asking to add twenty feet to one light standard. As you look at the property from the north, in fact, from that office property, you see the light standards and you see the lights, and at night, you really see the lights. Yes, we'll have an additional twenty feet there, but it's the best way to use the stealth ordinance to accommodate the need for RF signals in that area. So I'm, I'm happy to answer any other questions, but we really meet the ordinance, so.
So I, I have a couple comments, so maybe before I ask this, Lyle, or Nick, this residential pro- I know, I know there's a home here, but is this parcel zoned residential, or is it non-conforming residential?
Yeah, so the corner lot, and I'll pull it up, we're on a better map, so we can see further out. So this entire piece and these homes here are all zoned to the RA, residential agricultural zoning. And so, yeah, the homes are well up front, but while there's potential change for that, it's current.
Is the language to, to a residential zone, or to the residential lot, or to the residence?
Yeah, so let me make sure I'm accurate in it, but I believe that no tower shall be located closer than three hundred feet to the residential zoning boundary.
Okay, so, so there's a, there's a three hundred foot buffer here, anyway. And to use my golf analogy, that's about a lob wedge, sand wedge.
Yeah, so it must be at least three hundred feet from the property line of a residential zoning district.
It's a hundred yards.
So it is the, the district line itself, not the actual home.
And so then, I guess, that makes my next question moot, I was gonna say, did you evaluate over here? And I guess you can't, so, doesn't matter.
Yeah, that, that three hundred feet wipes out, you know, this is rough, but we talked about twelve poles, over half of them fall within that radius, and and, and again, we honestly, that ordinance aside, at least working with T-Mobile, didn't explore those locations in great detail with their park staff because simply for servicing and access, and, and those needs from our end were far from desirable. Also to their needs, it was much further outside of their area than they preferred, so but since our last meeting, I found that that, it kind of precluded that additional exploration, is that the zoning district wouldn't even permit it based on that proximity.
And this is a lease from the city?
Yeah, so currently, it would be before the city council to consider a lease agreement with them, so again, the city council has some different prerogative acting as the property owner under the consideration. But the idea would be, T-Mobile would build the, the tower, give it to the city, and then lease back the use of that tower to the city.
I was just gonna say, I appreciate the conversations that you've had, because you know, you know from last time, I, I wasn't really in favor of it, and I don't, to be truthful, I really don't love the idea of it in the park, but I, you know, our job is to just look at the ordinance that we have in front of us and say, does it meet it or not? And as far as I'm concerned, it does, so that's, that's the way I would lean.
I, I agree with what you said, and if I could just call your attention to the cell tower on two hundred north, right off, if, let's see, if we look right down that way. That is a obtrusive cell tower. It's, it's, it stands out by itself. We are putting in a cell tower with existing light towers surrounded by trees, so it's really, it really has the best benefit of being less obtrusive. When you put a hot cell tower in a business parking lot, it sticks out like a sore thumb, because it's by itself, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I generally, I, I think I going into last meeting, pushed back on both sides on this for a while, at least I tried to, but I'm, you know, basically in agreement with, with Tammy with the qualification that, that this isn't necessarily, and to Matt's point a little earlier, this isn't really a does this meet the ordinance or not issue. If it were that, it wouldn't even be before us, that's purely administrative. That's a, is it a, is it a permitted use or not? If it is, we must allow it. Conditional uses are not quite that clear, we just get to say, what are the, what are the detriment, what are the foreseeable detrimental impacts? And can we impose conditions? If, if the answer to that question is yes, we can mitigate those things by imposing conditions, then we must approve it. And I think the conditions that, we don't have to impose any conditions because, in my opinion, because they're already addressed. It's in, it's in amongst some trees, it's only twenty feet taller than multiple other light poles in the park, it's not in the middle of a residential area, it's kind of close to some industrial business park zone. All of those things are conditions that I would suggest, but they're already, they're already in the proposal, and therefore, I would say we approve it without any more conditions.
Is that a motion?
If, unless someone else wants to talk, yeah, sure, I'll make that a motion.
I'll second it.
I think you start, Will.
We ready for a vote?
Do, is there more discussion to be had?
I, I was just gonna say, can we ask them to replace trees if they have to remove them? I would like to add that. Is it too late to add that?
Is that, is that part of the
I, I'll amend my motion for that.
You can amend that in the motion.
Friendly amendment? Okay. You want to second, who's, someone seconding that?
I'll second, okay, I made it.
So what was the amendment again?
That, that, that any trees that are lost due to the construction would be replaced in the discretion, how about, I'll add this, in the discretion of the Parks Department
Okay.
where, where they want the tree, and the type of tree.
Yeah.
So I think we're ready for a vote.
Ready?
Is that right?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Let's see, I think we're now to... So we have a work session, I wonder if we can do the call to the public first, just in case there's any public that wants to
Yeah, it'd be appropriate if you'd like to switch the order, not a problem.
We, we put, we already front-loaded the training, so we're gonna have the call to public now, which is another chance for anybody here to come to the podium and comment on anything. Seeing no takers, we'll close the call to public. And on to the work session.
Okay. For a few of you, I'm sorry, for those of you who are new, we're gonna catch you up to speed on just a couple things. But again, as a work session item, I hope that this can be a lot of open discussion and back and forth, and, and I'd be happy to stay quiet and then honestly let the planning commission talk as much as you have interest in doing so. But we'll just do a brief introduction to why we're doing this, what some of this is about, and some of the items of consideration that we've done to date. And at least one item that I think is pretty concrete on how we're gonna go forward with this, and, and I'll start with that, and again, please interrupt me at any point, ask any questions, make any comments, would certainly welcome that. It's eight oh eight, so it's not extremely late, but also to consideration of your time, let me know if, if there's reason that we need to wrap things up at any point, but I suspect maybe within ten minutes here, I'll be done with, with my comments, and maybe that's optimistic, but we'll try not to
You have ten minutes.
Okay, so the
You set the timer for yourself? I'm kidding.
Eight oh nine, here we go. So the last legislative session, and as most of you know and often better than I, the legislature over the past several years has been looking heavily at land use, constantly do. And in light of Utah's great economy, explosive growth, and high quality of life, a lot of people like to live here, and a lot of businesses are coming here, a lot of jobs produced here. It's not getting any cheaper to live here and find housing, and of course, Caseville is no exception to that. And based on that, the Utah State Legislature passed Senate Bill thirty-four, I think it was the fourth substitute on that, where they finally came to an agreement on some of the parameters of this, where they're essentially mandating that cities, Caseville included, have a handful of elements within their general plan, one of which is an affordable housing element. And so we do have some of that, but we've got some work to do to come into compliance with what they've asked for. So what we're talking about, and based on the legislature, and I took this from the Wasatch Front Regional Council, I, I think it's two-part from what is states within the legislation, is, is not just providing housing options at different price ranges, that different people are able to afford, but it's also about housing choice and providing homes for people of different interests or different stages in their life within the community. So you see some different options here, and it kind of shows somebody progressing through their life from one housing type to the other as they have children or children move away, or so on and so forth, different stages in your career. I, I think we'll see that as part of our conversation as we talk about housing options. I may be off in the weeds here, but often, in my opinion, it's not necessarily what it is, but how it's done. You can see single-family, large lot homes that are poor in quality and don't bring value to a community. Conversely, you can see that same large lot, single-family home be done very well and, and bring value to the neighborhood and the community, and that would go for anyone. and the community. And that would go for any one of these housing types and products, in my opinion, that, as we discuss this. And of course, there are multiple ways to approach this, and I'll get into that next. Not all of those options are about providing different types of housing. And that's probably a clear way that we could address this as an option. And what we're doing here at this point is, we've been starting with the planning commission to find out from you as community leaders and, and appointed officials, what direction the city ought to take that meets a Kaseville flavor. How can we address it that works for our community and still meets the mandates that the state has, has put forth for us? So to give you more specifics on how this bill is set up, is there 24 separate provisions that the legislature's outlined as options for a community? And we have to pick at least three of them to implement and put into our general plan. And ultimately, we want ordinances that help put those on the ground, right? So with this, it's our general plan focus that we need to have put into place. This is not all of them, but these are ones that have been previously identified as not necessarily the answers, but items of interest to the commission. Commissioner Lyon, it looks like?
So yeah, she, when was the last time the city did a housing study, looking at densities and types of housing in the, in the city? Has the city commissioned that recently?
Um, yeah, so to what detail, I don't know if one's ever been done in my tenure for about five years, a specific housing study. So we do have some data, census data and things, that shows some typical housing prices, incomes and that type. And I'll share some of that with you this evening if you're interested, but our housing stock.
Is that pulled from Missouri?
Well, so we do have some Missouri data as well that we utilize. The data that I've got this evening is straight from the US Census Bureau and their Quick Facts and some of that. So we, we look at some different sources. It tends to be broader level data rather than maybe home-specific. It's something that I'm hoping to do. So, you know, I think something we've agreed on here as a commission is, it's a pretty big bite to swallow, I guess, on, on this particular one, an important issue for the community. I've heard from you that there's, we ought to outreach to the community and get their input as well as, as a part of this. So we are looking at, on August the 14th, it's a Wednesday, holding an open house, where we will be talking about housing choices and options to get some community input. I'm thinking of some different boards and activities or something they could do at tables as they go around to learn about why we're doing it, what some of the different things mean, help understand their preferences and the things they think should be important for the community. And one of those, maybe to Commissioner Lyon's point, and I'd certainly entertain other ideas if there's some more specifics. But I'm putting together, based on assessor data for valuation of homes within Kaseville, a map of essentially home value, so we can see ranges on, on what we have as far as our inventory and in-stock. And we've got the data. It shouldn't take us too much longer to produce that, but I hope so, that we'll be ready at least by then. And I hope to show it to you at our next planning commission meeting to see if that's something we wanna utilize at that, that meeting, among other things.
So just as a comment, I, I've got a study from James Wood that the county did in 2014 that I'll share with you, because, and the county's gonna go back. I mean, we're looking at doing a similar study, Housing Stock Countywide, for this exact reason and sharing with the cities. It's critical, we are, we are losing, I shouldn't say losing, we are in a, in a push right now, where our housing choices are limited. And our land is slowly, I mean, you've got the northwest quadrant, the north end of the county. Another area of the county where the housing choices are becoming limited, because the land is starting to get utilized by other choices. The county did this with James Wood out of the Gardner Institute back in 2014. And we'll probably tap that, put it out for RFP here in the fall. So watch for that. But I have the data from five years ago for you to utilize, so it's more, more granular than the census data for you.
Yeah, that'd be fantastic. And I, I think we may find that as we're looking to fulfill a mandate from the state by the end of the year. Doesn't mean we can't make it better after that case. We may be forced to make certain decisions based on that timeframe. But yeah, I'd love to see that, Commissioner Lyon, if we can get the updated version of that. And as we continue to make changes, and as we continue to get better data, we can certainly improve and refine those decisions we make in the short term.
I think that would be phenomenal. And the further we go into this process, the more refined it gets. We need data. We need to know what, what is existing, what is the current picture of Kaseville? And how do we want it to stay the same? And how do we want it to change, if it, if at all? Because, I mean, as an example, when we look at num, at point A, because I think these are the ones that we kind of pinpointed. If we looked at paragraph A, and we say, okay, if we're gonna rezone or zone certain areas for higher densities, where are those, where are those gonna go? And we could probably generally, in our own opinions, say, ah, I think here or here. But if it's a more data-driven decision, it's gonna be, I think, a, a better decision and a more defensible decision.
I agree.
And I think we'd be capable of producing some pretty sophisticated maps or items and data to help you. And what I'd be interested from the commission is maybe what that looks like. It might be different to you than the way I'm thinking. I think that would be an exercise that'd be great in an open house, is to have, here's a map of the city. And we talked about this under numerous rezone applications, point at us, put a sticker on, or whatever it's gonna be, the location where you think different housing types ought to go, and different color stickers, or however you want to do it.
Yeah, I, I think that would be really helpful, that we could do that.
Are you gonna include in that? I, I know I've had a couple of neighbors who expressed interest in agricultural preservation. Is that gonna be part of that discussion also?
Has not been on my rate to do so, but we could do that.
Preserving open space.
That'll be probably a part of the plan update, right?
So my, my current thinking was this particular open house would be very specific to housing.
Housing, okay, perfect.
But again, at your direction, if, if it's the consensus of the commission, that now's the time to do that. And maybe to frame things just a little bit also, because we got a lot happening, at least for Kaseville, I think, and we're busy. So we're currently working with a consultant, and Mr. Jessup, that's usually here with me, is across the street now, getting input from the community as we're doing a strategic plan process to help identify priorities and, and options that, that they're interested in. I'm hopeful, you know, that's still got a few months to wrap that up and some of the details on it. But we also have received funding through Wasatch Front Regional Council to hire a consultant to help us with, a general plan update specifically. And that will be starting, I probably tell you a different timeframe every time I'm around here, but at least late fall, I think, is, you know, probably optimistic at this point. But, but we are gearing up to do that. Open space preservation, all kinds of issues, I think, will come out of that business, non-housing related items that we can address with that in great detail.
And I think with the timeframe that we've got, how quickly we need to get this housing plan finished or ready to adopt per the state requirement, it probably ought to just focus on the housing.
Question on, on item E, would that account for like these, I've seen a concept home in like City Creek Center, like it's like a cottage-style home that you can put on an existing lot where there's a house already there, you have some little space behind it, so you put this kind of like a mother-in-law apartment behind your house? Is that what E is talking about?
An accessory dwelling unit is exactly that. So there are multiple ways that they can do that. It's, it's precisely what you're thinking, Commissioner Barris, where it could be a detached housing unit, often much smaller than the, the primary home on the property. It could also be part of the home itself. So a basement apartment or above the garage, something like that. So there are multiple ways we can address them. And, and yeah, I think that one is one that I've heard interest in from Kaseville residents on being able to do on their property. Currently, we only allow one dwelling on a prop, about 90-plus percent of the residential in Kaseville is a single-family detached. They're only allowed to have one building on there that's used as a residence.
So backing, backing up on that some question, how many cities in Kaseville law for ADUs?
Cities in Kaseville, cities in the state.
In Davis County?
Um, you know, I don't know all, I know Farmington does to the south. We can look at that. I, I had a presentation and I could get the data very quickly from the last APA conference. Sandy City gave one where they've dotted the map, but they're all over Utah. Farmington City was of interest in particular, speaking with their staff, they've had it for years as an option on the books. But they don't see that many applications come forward with it. So I think there's a little bit of a fear, once you put it in, overnight, you're essentially gonna double the density, because now you allow that second unit in the backyard type idea. But at least from their experience, having allowed it for many years, you know, it's just the odd, odd home that does it. But I'd be happy to get that. I know, I can certainly find how many cities do it.
In that same, in that same discussion, if we look at, if we look at how many cities they're doing, I'd like to see what their ordinances look like also, and see if there's some adaptability there for us.
There's a number of cities and ordinances around.
Yeah, yeah.
And more all the time. It's, it's an option that's getting more and more popular.
Salt Lake City's done it, I know.
Yeah, we did it when I was in Salt Lake City, and because of public objection at the time, it was very limited. But they've since expanded it.
I think very recently, it's become a lot more open. Yeah, I'm happy to get that, and, and we'd be happy to look at the data on others. We've started doing some of that, to see ideas. And, and you'll see language that the unit can only be so large, either in a specific square footage, or as a percentage of the property, or in a percentage of the, the primary home. You can limit occupants in it compared to a normal home. So there are a lot of ways you can deal with them. Other cities luckily have taken those steps before us, so we can often look to them to, and to get their expertise on it. And I think, you know, a number of these again are good examples. And in my mind, really the only way to, the most sure way, and as we've discussed it as staff and with Mr. Jessup, is you reduce square footage, you reduce costs. And that goes both with your lot and the building. And there's just simple math to that, and that would be a big part of it. So different ways to do that is that apartments stacked together, is that simply smaller lots. Currently, within our ordinances, within our R1 districts, and R18 is our smallest district. Many jurisdictions have an R16 and R15. They allow for eight, being an 8,000 square foot lot in Kaseville. You could do a 6,000 square foot lot or 5,000 square foot lot, very common in, in other jurisdictions. And simply by allowing smaller lots, again, you can even do that in Kaseville, but you make a big jump from R18 to an R2, which about doubles your density potential. And so I don't know that we've discussed that with this commission during this yet, but that could be another consideration, is maybe we don't have to make an apartment zone, but maybe we make simply a smaller lot residential zone, right? So there's many ways we can look at this. I don't know that the intention tonight is to say this is that way, but again, facilitating the conversation, this is what we're discussing. I'll just bump over here, so good luck reading it over here. Hopefully, I can give it to you. But from the Housing and Urban Development Department with the federal government, HUD, they, they keep track of income limits. We fall within Ogden-Clifford metro area, where, based on Kaseville's household side of just under four persons on a typical household, the average median income is $85,000 within this area. Kaseville's is, is higher than that. I think it's closer to $95,000. I've got the data, I just don't have the numbers here with this tonight. But so you see, there's, there's an innate issue where our area average is lower than our city's average. It makes it even more challenging to accomplish these numbers that are, you know, for a broader range and a broader area. But when you look at their income limitations of 80%, 50%, 30%, ultimately, we're trying to provide housing. And, and I felt as the more I've looked at the legislation, you know, it's, it's not so specific to say Kaseville has to build 100 homes that will accommodate people to 30% AMI. Again, I think we get to pick and choose and understand how that works within our community and how that meets Kaseville's layer. But as you look at these numbers, what we are tasked essentially is to find ways to help facilitate housing that a family that has an income of $68,000, for example, could afford to rent or purchase a home based on that income. To give you an idea, here, based on the fair market rate from, from HUD, for our zip code, those are what those rent rates should look like. We're still working to get data for you as to what that actually looks like. I think that it's, felt that it's much higher on some of these.
For a home in Kaseville, it's about $2,400 a month.
So that would probably come into the three, four-bedroom range, right, where you're, you're much higher than these numbers. From, from my match, a simple 30% of your income going towards housing, a home price based on that $68,000 number we saw means somebody could potentially purchase a $226,000 home. And certainly within new construction, which is what I deal mostly with, you don't find homes for that cheap in Kaseville. So I'm saying we've gotta find more creative ways to, you know, we start facilitating that a little bit. The market's gonna come into play a little bit, is to, you know, how much is actually produced. But are we making it at least possible that they could come within those ranges? Again, a rental rate, based on the $68,000 number, might be about $1,700 a month, which hits close to these, these numbers up here. So at least gives you an idea on what we're looking to accommodate. You know, Wasatch Front Regional Council talked about, these are your policemen, your, your teachers, you know, depending on the household and how many workers you have. Again, from the census, this compares us to national averages. Hopefully, I don't make you dizzy going left or right. But I think I gotta zoom in so we can all read it. So you, you can see we've got, within Kaseville, it doesn't give our housing units. We have roughly 32,000 people as far as our population currently. It's just over 9,000, give or take, residential properties, I think, within the city limits. We have an extremely high owner occupied rate. That's the 88.7%. Here, we see that the median value of those homes is in the 293,000 range, which again is about 70,000 above that number we were looking at as the target. And what that means for those who own their home, how much they're paying, roughly 1,600 a month. Those who don't have a mortgage anymore are still paying, and their insurance or taxes, an average of $400 a month is, is that lower number. And rentals are closer to $850, according to this data. So you can kind of see how that compares to the averages. I don't know if I'll go into this in great detail. I've done my nine minutes and then some, 10 minutes, whatever. But this, this would be an item I think we could do with the community at the open house. So as, as we're talking with them, you know, I, maybe, you know, I think we went up to like 50 units an acre with you last time, but break it down to something that's probably more within our range of, here's what, when we say additional to the density, what that could look like. So whether it's these or something similar, we can provide them with, you know, different options of seven units an acre, seven and a half, continue to go up. And again, you'll see within these, again, it's a lot about it, how it's done, not what it is. Some of the lower densities look a lot better than, or some, excuse me, some of the higher densities look better than some of the lower. So it's, it's all over the board. We could continue to fine-tune which examples are provided. But if you think this would be a beneficial exercise to let the community say, you know, we like these types of developments. And sure, maybe they don't belong everywhere, but perhaps this density works in that location. So we'll teach them on that, educate them, and then help them through the map. Commissioner Sonlove was referring to, find homes for, for these kind of options, if that's of interest. I think that's the crux of what I was hoping to dive into tonight, to bring our new commissioners up to speed on what we're looking at. Happy to, again, take any questions, whether you've got answers now, or get homework, to provide better answers for you next time on this particular item. I think kind of where we're at is prepping for that August 14th date to have what we need to make it a successful operation, where you're getting the impact, the input that would be beneficial to you to help make a recommendation to the council.
Thank you. I, I have one comment. You know, the, this is kind of the conundrum with kind of the public policy and public input. I, I think we're gonna have a hard time convincing, well, let's put this way, I, I'm not sure that the Kaseville general public is gonna be excited about any.
Open house?
No, not open house, although that might be, multiple-use, multi-unit, kind of these mixed-use dwellings. I, I mean, I, I think they're exciting. I think we've seen a few examples of them here in Kaseville that have worked well or will work well. And I think that's the way, the wave of the future. I think that's where we need to be. But my general sense of the population is they're gonna be very much, they won't be, they won't be excited about this. And what I would suggest is, as part of your agenda, as you talk about this open house, is maybe having, setting up the, spending some time setting up the legal background of this, as to why it's important. You know, there's the federal funding element to it, there's diversity, there's, you know, people now are, not everybody wants to have a half-acre lot and spend three hours a Saturday, you know? And I'm saying that from personal experience. I say that, I think probably four times a year, I say that, like, why do I have such a big yard? And I, so I think some, I think your... Um, and uh, I, so I think some, I think your, your, I would say your biggest difficulty, your most important task is the gentle persuasion that these kinds of options are really what we need to do and um, for lots of reasons. And that the old dynamic of, you know, an apartment complex and it looks, sure, it looks good the first couple of years, but after five or six years, it all goes to pot and there's, you know, transient, you know, single people that don't care about their, you know, all that kind of stereotype, we need to address that to get any success in having some public support for what I think we need to do.
Good.
I'd also add on to that, I'd also take a look at what's going on in Bountiful right now with their downtown redevelopment, because one of the things I think is key to Kaysville is protecting your downtown. The the vitality of any city, and you see this statewide, is the downtown urban area. And you you have to protect your main street. But I think if you see how Bountiful is what they're doing in that redevelopment, and they're putting high density in that downtown, and it's mixed use, and it's sharp, and it looks nice. I mean, and it's on a, it's on a transit line. It's building out the vitality of their main street. I think they've got a good redevelopment plan going. I think that that's an idea that can happen. The other thing I think is good is is what's going on over in Station Park and Farming. We have some good neighbors that are doing some good planning. I think that is the idea. I think bringing some pictures and some of those ideas, you know, so here's what's going on, our neighbors. You know, we can have some of this product coming in here, maybe not the same type of product overall, but I think, you know, bringing in local that's going on, some of the, some of the theoretical stuff in other communities that's, you know, you gotta have a planning book, don't work, but when you go down and look at the other cities, I would bring that into it, because when they look at it, I say, okay, there's the, there are those other cities. They recognize that because they go down there and stuff. I think that's critical. But then talking, you know, the, you know, protecting the main streets is a big one, because if you don't do that, you lose the identity of your city.
Would, so I'm hearing a couple specific different themes. We've got a map. Do you think I could, uh, how do I, I'll just be right up front and then you guys can answer. Is there interest from the commission in helping and prepare these elements for the meeting? So if I, for example, maybe work with you, Commissioner Lyon, on those examples, perhaps chair Mr. Anderson on the the legal ramifications or why setting that up? Maybe some details there and with Commissioner Sunlov, for example, and maybe the map exercise. Are you available or willing to, if I limit how much input you would have to give, if I'm just giving you specific assignments? Again, we do the crux of the work, but to at least use you as a reference is this, are we getting the right direction? And then when we meet again, um, we'll have one more, at least one more meeting prior to that date. Then the commissioner as a whole can give input and, yeah, that we like where that's going. Is that acceptable? You like coming away with homework?
I think so. And and I think, I think the other thing, and you referenced, is there's our funding opportunities available. Uh, I think we need to talk about that. You know, if the city has a CRA, I mean, ten percent of any new CRA does have to go to affordable housing. One of the things, my professional capacity at the county is going after is home CDBG funds. Right now, we do get the CDBG, and that goes for the infrastructure stuff, but there, we are, we chasing, uh, we ask maybe about a million to million-five in home, which is housing funding for this type of product. But none of the cities right now are doing that. It comes through the Onlyon Walker Fund. So I think the county has a vested interest in this process with all the cities as a partner. So, you know, without having the plan, we can't access the funding. So this is definitely with with the cities and with this type of a process. We've got to get this in place to be able then to go back and access the the funding, whether it's the state or whether it's the federal, to be able to build this kind of product here. And I think we've got to be able to have the plan in place to get that. I'm more than willing to come up and and invest some time working with us, with you.
We'll try not to make it too burst, that would be appreciated, and I think that helps make sure your ideas and and your, uh, again, the input you're looking for are accounted for.
I have one quick thought. I mean, if I were to guess, I probably would agree with, you know, what Matt said in terms of what the general consensus would be, but that's an assumption in terms of how we think most people in Kaysville would feel about quote-unquote higher density, which again, as I've always said, is a relative term. But um, it, what I would like to do is try to root out the accuracy of that assumption. And this is, it might be too late and it might not be feasible, but um, if we had a a survey, go out to the citywide, like the Fiber Survey.
Yeah.
And ask the right questions, which I think there were some not right questions asked on the Fiber Survey, but that's a different discussion. Ask the right questions and get the consensus from citywide about what everyone thinks from east to west, north to south, about the type of housing and density or or not in Kaysville. Then then I think we would, that would be really valuable information. Because if we, if we get people here to the the public open house, those are gonna be who, people who are interested. And maybe it might result in a vocal minority. A survey isn't gonna be a perfect uh, uh, tool, but it'll be a better representative of what the city thinks.
People that come to open houses are usually self-selected and they come because they're opposed.
Exactly. That's just, they're just people that don't like.
Right.
Is there a way to do a text message sort of?
Yes, so right now, through the city's website platform, people can sign up to, um, for example, receive information about news and headlines from the city or Parks and Rec's information. They get emails and or text. If they go through that, we could send out uh, text messages for people to receive it. So we do have some, um, I couldn't give you the number, but people who have opted in to those to receive that. Um, beyond that, uh, I think our email lists are much more robust, um, but even they would be somewhat limited. But I'm absolutely more than willing to to go the survey route in addition to the open house and solicit feedback that way.
How, what would the process be? How cumbersome? How expensive? All that kind of stuff, a survey?
Well, so we currently have, uh, the city owns a license to Qualtrics, uh, which is a survey platform. Uh, so we've used it for, the Fiber example was brought up. I've done it with uh, some business issues and others in the past. So to create the survey and distribute it, it's just a matter of the emailing and um, I would think it's limited to no cost to send it out. So if we've already got lists and we're sending it out to those.
People who responded to Fiber, for example, that we know that they're, they'll do it, they they'll pay attention, whatever.
Yep.
Well, and I was just gonna mention, you know, the the demographics of the people that will be in favor of higher density housing were are probably, you know, people who are retiring, who don't want to mow their lawn and they're they're tired and, you know, they just don't want to spend that much time. And younger kids, I've got a twenty-four-year-old, I have a twenty-year-old, talking to them and their friends, they don't, they can't afford to live in Kaysville, number one, if they wanted to. And and if they did live in Kaysville, they don't want large houses. They want to buy a townhouse or something like that. So to reach those people who would actually respond and and increase the ability to actually have accuracy in the surveys, um, I think would have to be done differently. So I'm just wondering if there's a way to do that.
Well, and and I'll look to the expertise of the commission there. So what we're finding some success with with a strategic plan, uh, you know, as I was mentioning, you hold an open house, which is very typical government request or input from the public. You get a limited number of people that show up on and on. Uh, we've been trying pretty heavily to go where the public is. And so um, at events, farmer's market or something, we'll we'll gather input. We can head out maybe and collect emails and collect interest from that, have the open house and perhaps do the survey shortly after. That gives people more time to give us their information so we have a a way to track them down. Maybe that's not necessary, because if they came to the open house, they already gave us their information and we don't need the survey from them, but.
I would add, I would add to that, uh, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, right? Then you then you tap into a little demo, a bit different demographic.
Well, and and just a text. I don't know how, if that's just really expensive. But that, I think, would reach more people and you'd have more of a broad response than email.
Okay.
If if, depending on how much it costs, but.
Yeah, I suspect there's probably some cost to it, so I think, I don't know how much it is, but I can find out from it. We can, as administration, find out what to do with it. And again, I'm happy to do it. Maybe we just hit all those platforms, right? I'm saying I think our email lists are much more robust, but that doesn't mean we can't also do the text in addition to the email, right? So, yeah. Okay, um, and then maybe the last question, I suppose I have. So at our last meeting, we had a resident who came and, you know, was hoping to see more maps or details. And again, I think we'll have those at this open house at the very least. And perhaps we have a landing page on our website where people can also go to see them. Much of that, I I think, there's there's a lot of sources with a lot of data that are already existing. So when they ask the city if we've produced anything, uh, you know, perhaps not at this point. We may be capable of doing so. Um, I just, you know, thought this was interesting, so we probably do less than maybe we should as a city, because we're not that large, square, square footage, or, excuse me, square miles. We we know the area. You know, I could talk to you about probably anyone, maybe the entire city, and tell you where there are big homes, small homes, price points, you know, just anecdotally what Kaysville is. So probably take that for granted sometimes when maybe people don't realize what it is. So we could produce some maps to show, you know, this one, for example, all that yellow is single-family residential on the Wasatch Front here. This is Kaysville, Layton, Farmington area. Yeah, people may not realize that that's what it looks like. So we can produce things like this or pull up sources that already have that type of data. Uh, we know how old the housing stock is, the darker, the red, newer. So you you know, again, anecdotally, we know that, you know, west of I fifteen is where all the new homes are being built. Uh, this old part of town, you can see a tiny bit of blue. Um, you know, you have much older housing stocks. So where is it ripe for redevelopment? Um, we can kind of gauge where that might be based on data like this. Where centers planned within WFRC's data. So you can see that Main Street, North Main Street and and our Main Street area are a corridor center area based on our regional planning agencies, uh, Wasatch Choice twenty-fifty vision. Uh, we know where transit is. We know which properties are tapped within a range to be able to access that transit. Again, Kaysville, it's Main Street and there's, so again, anecdotally, we kind of know these things, but we can show and produce these, and I don't know if there are specific items that you think would be helpful to the public to understand if I'm choosing where this density goes, do we want to show in relation to a bus line? Is that relevant? Is it better to show the businesses or parks or what what would you think would be most helpful?
I think you need to show the, I think you need to show the transit and some of those, um, show the infrastructure. I think you also need to show future roadway.
Okay.
Particularly West Davis Corridor, what the the impact that's gonna have coming in. And I think you also show somewhat the abutment of the neighboring communities where Farmington, uh, from Shepherd all the way up into here and and also the Layton Parkway.
Wonderful. Thank you. Probably leave, you know, again, these are, these are fun things to just dig through. Here's the transit lines, uh, that circulates around Davis Tech and stuff. So we we can certainly get it for people. It it comes, it comes very quick. Uh, we have no problem getting this type of data. Again, just please, provide the input and what you think is beneficial, and I pretty appreciate those comments, Commissioner. Uh, here's an affordability one. Uh, you know, this is the Kaysville boundary essentially green up in Layton. So these, the darker blue is the higher income, the light blue is high. So there's, uh, we're in one of the highest, uh, price points, most least affordable areas within the county, Bountiful. Down here is the other dark area. Salt Lake, of course, has other, uh, you know, issues. So again, if that's helpful, we can print that and have that available. And and it's not the fine-grained detail. It sounds like there are other, you know, studies that can get that and we'll work on that together to to have those for you as well. Um, but I just thought this would be fun to show you, um, you know, employment and travel patterns when people are working and such, some of what's already available out there that we can easily get. Or if we produce something similar, we can, we can do that. Okay, well, that's, I said I was done with my comments and that was my last comment today, so. I think we've got a good direction.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I really liked your, um, Steve's, um, point about showing them, showing people, showing us cities like Bountiful. Because I think as you, as you go along Main Street, people don't realize there's high-density housing there. You know, as you're driving down and looking at the cute shops and stuff, they don't realize it's a mixed-use area. And so at least I don't, you know, unless I'm paying attention and looking for it. So I think that's great to show people that it's cities like ours. This is what it looked like before and this is how it looks now and 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 see how much people enjoy it and how much of an impact it's made. Yeah, it's beautiful. It's beautiful and it's, it's great, so, yeah.
Okay. Good discussion. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Does that take us to the end of the work session?
I am complete with my comments, I think, for the evening and got some marching orders, so unless you have more.
Okay, we'll close the work session and go on to reports, correspondence and calendar.
So the calendar item that I have, just briefly to discuss, one report, I apologize. Um, I think I've reached out to the commission, so for those new commissioners, you got some hard copies tonight. Wifi, I'll continue to bring that up. Um, but we are trying to to work with you on a digital basis. It works best for us as staff. And frankly, I think there's some advantages if we get it all working right. So, um, some devices will be provided so that we make sure you have access to those PDF and digital documents. If if you haven't received access to, new or existing commission members or Dropbox with chats and additional files, our general plan, um, other relevant documents, let me know. I hope you get set on to that as as that can be useful in your considerations of these processes that we work through on a regular basis. As far as the calendar, um, I've, based on your request, I appreciate the outreach. Sounds like we have at least five of our seven commissioners who will not be available on the twenty-fifth. So have a happy twenty-fourth of July holiday and it sounds like hopefully a lot of you have fun plans. Um, I do have some applicants who always have applicants, but um, would be interested in moving forward with some of their items and development. I can't guarantee they're actually gonna be ready. Is there any interest in the commission on attempting to meet prior to, I believe it's August the eighth, which will be your next meeting?
Prior to, so you're just saying a substitute meeting?
Yeah, if for some reason, a different day towards the end of the month makes sense. And again, we're, we're working with some, some subdivision plats where they would love not to wait. We've informed them that they probably are going to have to wait based on our understanding, and so they've had that expectation. But if you feel strongly that we'd rather meet on a different date to accommodate those, uh, we will do our best to have them ready for that.
So it would either be the eighteenth or the first.
Yeah, when both those Thursdays are city council nights, so it would have to be a non-Thursday.
Not on Thursday, got it, okay.
So, yeah, that that limits you.
So what about like the thirty-first? That that would be a Wednesday, wouldn't it?
I can't do that, but.
That wouldn't work.
I can't do the week of the twenty-second. I'll be gone. Not that that matters, but, you know. Any other time I can.
Okay, well, look at your calendars and and probably what I will do is, well, I'll be out tomorrow, but first part of next week, maybe do some outreach. And get a little bit more specific. I think there may be two or three subdivisions that, again, would be interested in it. And you'll probably have a better response to me if I tell you, yeah, we we would be ready with them as staff. I can't tell you that so specifically right now at this point, that even if we were to meet, that we'll be ready to go with them. So I'll, I'll try and have some additional insight and we'll get the feedback by emails or phone call correspondence outside the meeting. Um, otherwise, August the eighth is the next meeting, and that's, um, on August the fourteenth, as we discussed, and have on your calendar, that's for the open house. And that's my correspondence for you.
What was the date of that open house again? August what?
It's a Wednesday, August the fourteenth. And I think you have, and I think there's city council the day after. So you would meet just about a week after that, so we'll try and synthesize some of the information we collect before that twenty-second of August meeting was a planning commission.
Okay, is that it?
Training opportunity, I'd just like to make you all aware of that we're, we are putting it together on Salt Lake, on behalf of Salt Lake County, but there are, we've got a number of major sponsors that are joining with us, including UTA and several other big groups. Um, it's a, we're bringing in a speaker on August twenty-eighth. Uh, the session is gonna be called Making Strides, Creating Walkable Communities. The speaker's Jeff Speck, who has written two great books on walkable communities. Very well-recognized nationally. He'll be here August twenty-eighth, be doing a luncheon and then a afternoon seminar. You can attend both or one, whichever you prefer. Uh, it'll be at the Vivint Smart Home Arena in the Jazz One Hundred Club, which is a nice little venue there. And, uh, we are getting phenomenal response of people who want to go to this just by virtue of the fact that this is all about walkable communities, which is what we've been, you mentioned this for our downtown here and for other things that we do. So it's a great opportunity. So, it's a great opportunity, if you're interested, there's a, I can't remember what the cost was. Lyle, have you seen that, has it come across your emails?
I don't remember seeing it, so, yeah, Jeff Speck is a name I've heard much about, so I think that must have stood out, that's exciting.
And then, maybe you can send it out to the planning commissioners, but if that's something you're interested in, I think it'll be a good opportunity. We've got, like, Taylorsville is sending their entire planning commission to this. They're really hot on this, they've read, they've read his book. Taylorsville Planning Commission is, they have, they started a book club.
Oh, really?
And they read a planning-related book, and they always do it in conjunction with, they invite another planning commission in another city to do it with them.
That's a good idea.
And then they get together and have a discussion on it.
Interesting.
And they've read this guy's book, and now they all want to go to the seminar, and listen to him, and talk to him there, so, they're quite a planning commission there in Taylorsville.
That's a good idea.
Josh, ready for your motion.
Good turn, so move.